I'll do.
We'll start over.
I'll go ahead and take a roll call. Hunter Newhart, Jerry Brummer. Ryan Kingsbury. Laura York. John Dayler.
He's here.
Janelle Gaddis. Janice Wiegel.
Here.
John said here in the chat.
Okay, Nancy Condrin.
There she is. She just logged on.
Okay, Nancy Condrin is here. Tori.
Here.
And Brett.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I want to make sure everybody knows that there is a quorum and it has been established. Now, we will review the minutes of May 20th and June 16th. I'll leave a motion. This 30 minutes as written. A second. Just a second. Okay. Did you have both from Tori? I can't remember. Were you on?
I do have both.
Yes, okay. Tori made a motion to approve both the May 20th and June 16th minutes as written.
Any questions from the chat? Rebecca?
Janelle seconded the motion.
No questions.
Any discussion?
Any discussion of this motion? Are there any questions in the chat? Okay, seeing no questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye and we will go through the roll. Jerry?
I'm going to abstain because I wouldn't hear it either one of the meetings.
Laura? John Dayler?
Rebecca, does John say yay or nay on approving the minutes?
If I share this, can you guys see it?
Yes.
Hold on. It's up to your email.
Okay, so you guys can see that?
Okay.
He said, there you go. Now you can see the chat.
No, now we can see your whole desktop.
Oh boy, that isn't my desktop.
Me too. Should all be on the cloud.
So he said, there was no questions and then yay.
Okay, thank you. You might want to stop sharing.
Okay, so John said yay. Janelle?
Aye.
Aye. Janice says yay. Nancy? We'll go ahead. Tori?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Rebecca, does Nancy respond?
She's typing. She said yes.
Okay, the motion passes with two abstaining. Okay, Nicole, would you like to bring an overview of the SNAP Ed funding?
Yes. Will you all allow me an extra three minutes to give you an overview of how extension is funded?
Yes.
So, we used to be called Cooperative Extension and that was a lot easier to kind of clearly outlined that we were funded cooperatively. So, extension is funded through federal dollars with the Smith-Leber Act, which was passed in 1914. We are also funded federally through the Nutrition Education and Obesity Prevention Grant Program. That covered our SNAP education staff. So, those are the federal contributions to extension. And if you look, I have these little pamphlets. If you open it up to the middle, there's a diagram that shows this. The federal allocation is 6% if you look in the little diagram on the left. And if you wonder why it's only 6%, the federal formula does not benefit western states with low numbers of humans. The federal formula gives 20% to each state equally. 40% is based on number of rural people divided by the number of rural people in all other states. So, we have less people in Oregon, so we get less money. And then the other number, that's the other 40% is calculated by number of farms divided by number of farms in all states. So, like southern states and eastern states that are all privately, mostly private land and have lots of farms and lots of rural designated rural people, they get way more federal dollars to fund extension. But we get our little 6%. That's the federal allocation. And there's a state allocation through the statewide. We've talked about that before. So, extension, ag experiment stations, and the Forest Research Lab, they're all together in something that's called the statewide. And that's an allocation to extension. And that's about 45% of our budget. And then y'all represent the Extension Service District in Crete County. And every other county in the state, either through a service district or general fund allocation, gives money to support the operations of extension in their community. Then you'll see Oregon State University, they give us about 1% of our budget and that goes very specifically to programs that they see as helping recruit students. We have a lot of research and project grants. We get a little tiny bit of philanthropy. And that is how we are funded. So, any questions about that?
So, the federal money, when it comes through, it comes through via the state, through Oregon State, and then dispersed out to the?
Uh huh. It comes into the Division of Extension.
Right.
And engagement. Or that tiny little bit. So, federal funding over the years has been pretty flat. And state funding across the country dropped precipitously in the 2008 recession and hasn't really caught back up. So, that's why you'll hear people talk about there being less faculty in offices now than there were 30, 40 years ago. And that's why. So, what we have happening right now is a perfect storm. The new federal budget cut the SNAP Ed program entirely. It's going to end in September. And that's a $9.3 million cut to extension. The state didn't give us our full cost of service level that we requested. They went about 2% less than what we needed there. So, we don't have like a big cushion with which to replace this $9.3 million. So, one of the consequences of that is our current SNAP Ed faculty member in Crete County, without any intervention, their position would end at the end of September. We've been meeting with the finance director in the county, with Commissioner Hermrich, with Rebecca, to talk about seeing if maybe we can fund this position for one year using Extension Service dollars. That would allow us time to look for other avenues.
What's the percentage total of the loss?
The percentage?
Yeah.
Of the entire?
The amount.
It's $9.3 million. And so, they're doing a complete reorganization. So, that would, that's about $80,000 we calculated for, towards the Crete County position.
Okay.
Because we already, Crete County already pays 20% of Shawna's position to do general health work.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
And that's per year, Rebecca? $80,000?
Did any of the project grants get clawed back?
Yeah. Yeah, we've had a lot of different research grants get cut. Have been rescinded because they feel that they're targeting one population over the other. And it, they're not discriminating. We had a rural broadband access grant that was cut. We had a women's risk management for women farmer operator grant that was cut. So, anything that's deemed to be like targeting one, one population over another.
So, that, so when you look at that.
That green one?
Yeah.
That's going to be smaller.
Right. That's what I'm thinking. It'll be interesting to see what that ends up.
But some of them, they're just asking us to rewrite them or?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We've been given opportunities in some of them to do a rewrite.
I kind of want to add my two cents because I'm the one that is lobbying for Shawna to continue here. Shawna is amazing. Shawna was the one that started our Green Bags Program where we go out and every other month, we put out a bag. And we're now collecting, the last collection, there was 2,800 pounds of food that was just volunteered. Shawna's there for holiday partnership. If I find anything and I send it to Shawna, I can guarantee you that she is working. And the best thing about her is, I go to other committees, other functions or committee meetings, and we're doing a tri-county thing. Shawna is committed to the people of Crete County. And she is so essential. And I know we only have a year, but I think that there's ways that we, as a county, or maybe OSU, but I think if we could get this year and we could keep her on, I'm hoping that we figure out a way to perpetuate it. Because to lose her, so let me tell you, when I first became a commissioner, they told me about food insecurity that met in the Clover Building. And I went. And there were three of us. There are now 35 women. And they come from everywhere. They come from St. Paul and Vincent. They come from Oregon Department of Human Services. The library comes, the health department comes. Every church around here comes, Redemption House comes. And what's wonderful about what Shawna has done is like Jerry may have four cases of tangerines that no one in his places is using. And the gal from Pioneer High School, which we now have put a pantry in, which is also accessible to Crete County high schools. She'll say, well, my kids love tangerines. And this lady will say, okay, let's meet in the parking lot. And so, it's so wonderful to see all these. First of all, Crete County is so generous and I'm so proud to be a member of it. But it is so wonderful to have an individual who has brought all these diverse people together and they're working together. And when you look at hunger, you're looking at right now, Vietnam vets are coming to our veterans' office because they own their house, they pay their utilities, and the fourth week of the month, they have no money for food. Or you're looking at the single mom who's working her ass off and she's got kids and there she is, you know? And you're looking at the kid that goes home on Friday and has no food till Monday. And a child is innocent. I don't care. That's a fault of the parents, but still, the bottom line is that that child is hungry from Friday to Monday. So, Shawna is trying to initiate a backpack program for those children. And we try to do it with discretion. We don't try to do it where we shame anyone or make them be embarrassed. Everything is done super discretion. So, I, I am just a total Shawna fan. And like tomorrow, Owens Corny, who is laying off 184 people, is having a presentation in the Branton Room at the library. I don't even think Brian knows this, but I got together with Shawna and I got together with Dev Shaw of the Chamber. And we are going to put tables out in the patio. And we are going to have just programs. We're not going to solicit anyone, but we're going to be there. Central Electric has a program if you're in a tough spot. Here's the, here's the stuff to get. Here are some food vouchers we have. Here is this. And that is all Shawna. And who is she helping? She's helping, I figure, there's 184 employees. If they have a partner, now you're 400. If they have a couple of kids, you know, she's helping us and she's helping us here. So, I cannot say enough words. And like I said, I said her something. She is all over it. The library currently is going after a $283,000 grant, which would be $70,000 a year for food preservation. Yeah, preservation. And if it's gotten, that will be put into Shawna's hands, who will use it very well. So, we're working as a county to try to keep her and to try to enhance the quality of life of our citizens. So, like I said, I can't tell you, I think I've summed up all the things I can think of. When I get home, I'll think about five more things I should.
There is, there is an impact sheet in your board packet.
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead. Thank you, Susan. That's, as food insecurity is only going up.
Exactly.
Quickly.
Exactly.
It's really a needed program. So, thanks to the county.
And the other thing is, you know, the SNAP, the SNAP benefits are $6 per person. And next year, because the state now is going to have to pony up, our state is going to have to put in $385 million. And as you all know, we're in a $750 million deficit right now with ODOT and all the other stuff. So, it is so crucial for us to have someone here that helps us, helps our citizens. Because we never know where we'll be. Thank God, I'm okay now, but you don't know what tomorrow will be.
So, to be clear, the request is to utilize the, use money out of the extension. The reason you're all here is because we want to use money from the Extension Service District budget to cover that $80,000.
It's more than $80,000. So, when we sat down together, and you have Will, was the first to. Jamie is our budget officer for the county also. She put together that sheet that's here on the end also. I reached with them yesterday and asked, plain and simple, after we've had a couple of meetings, what, instead of getting into the weeds or anything, what did they want to make sure to be said to you guys? So, you know, we have looked at the numbers over and over again and knowing that the program will be sunset in September, and we had already allocated $20,000 to pay to her to that position and to that program. We were looking for $107,000 is what the whole total would be for the year. But not starting until September makes it be that it would be closer to $80,000 in the end of being a whole year.
Well, you already have.
We are, we would only go to June. So, it'd be September to June.
But you already have $21,000 allocated.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
And we just need September to June, which is $80,000 of $107,000 total.
October 3rd. Yeah.
And in, in talking to Will today, who is our county manager, he left on a little vacation this afternoon. What would be, what we would like to see be done is that you guys make a motion tonight. If you, if you decide that you would like to do this with the budget and do what we're doing. And then it would come to the commissioners and we would ratify it. And then that way, it would be a complete process. So, that was what I was also asked. That's Will's words, not mine, but.
And if you guys want more information, he also said that to me yesterday. If you would like us to gather more information, you're more than welcome. Because using the advisory board and wanting to know what all this entails, it's 100% up to you of knowing what what all there is. So, they, Christina had said, it's not, we're not going into any reserves. And so, you guys know that. When we looked at everything, if we don't hire extra help and it's, that's how it's allocated, is extra help. It's somebody that helps us in like the fair time. And we have like Sandy Foley helps out with Better Bones and Balance. We want to keep her, you know? There are people that we have here, but we put money in for like capital outlay if we needed to replace the roof. So, we're just, you know, we might be using that money. Or there, there's little pieces in there. When you guys looked at the budget, when we approved it, there, we can slim down our budget and not be using anything out of contingency at this point.
Okay, so that was going to be my question. So, where are you pulling that $80,000? So, you're just going to go through like bits and bobs on various line items that have, that you can pull for personnel? Because there's some that you can't touch for personnel.
But things that she is an OSU employee and intergovernmental services is where we pay. Carmen and I come out of the personnel line. We guys look at that LB form.
Right.
But Shawna and Master Gardeners and the open campus position gets paid out of intergovernmental services. And so, this would all be funneled through intergovernmental services.
Okay, so intergovernmental services is $150,000.
So, and last year, we spent about $100,000. And so, right there, if you spent close to that, there's.
Why did, I can't remember what the reasoning was that we approved it. I should know this. Because we, I asked the question, I think. $150,000 versus 100.
So, in the years past, help me out with this, Brian and Suzie. Two years ago, when you guys had, there were like additional accounts, you two, Jerry, that they, when Andy was here, he dissolved those accounts and put it all into our main account. We kind of added to keep them in there. And so, it's not all in contingency. And so, just because it's there doesn't mean it has to be used.
Okay.
And if we ultimately were to spend more than what was in there, you know, over that 15%, you know, of the whole budget, then we would have to do a supplemental budget. And we haven't gotten close to that.
Right. So, I know I'm acting like I'm six here. For $150,000, it had, let's just say there was an additional 50 put in that we approved, does that mean you're only going to try to find 30 to make that 80? Or are you going to find another 80 in addition to that 50?
So, right away, when I first had my first meeting with Nicole, because as soon as I heard the news, I was obviously lobbying for Shawna. I had the finance director here. And so, we had really fine tuned. And they know that I'm kind of a fiscal, I'm kind of a tightwad. And we feel very comfortable with the way that we have looked at this budget and where we can get it. And it's been over, and then our budget manager, who's Jamie, she went over it again. And so.
She's the one that made this report. So, if you look at it, and we were to spend this amount over time.
We would be.
And so, he says, like her statement, I printed it so you guys know, Christina's words are, for the forecast, let them know that this is helpful. And for our prior conversations, I think that they need to know, and we all agree, that it can be approved on an annual basis. But at this point, it is viable on only a yearly basis. And we need to look over it from year to year. And then, because knowing that it can deplete funds over time.
Yeah. I think between the $50,000 and the intergovernmental services, not filling that office assistant position and then not filling the full amount in capital outlay and vehicle outlay. We're good.
Okay, so that's really helpful because this was really confusing to me. Because the next question I was going to say is, why do we tank so fast?
It's spending at 100%. So, like last year, we only spent up 70%. This is if we spent every single dollar.
Right, right. With that position not being funded from federal dollars.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, Robin Peter to pay Paul to keep the position. Okay. I get it now.
And one of the things, when you look at this graph, they're not taking into account that we're going to have more property taxes or Facebook's coming online or any of that.
Right.
This is that it just stays exactly the way it is today, which it won't. It's going to, it's, so there's, there's a little bit of speculation in this. But we hired the budget gal to be our worst.
Right.
Worst voice. So, she did, she did a good job as being the worst voice.
The voice of reason.
The finance department at Crete County feel comfortable, but only for one year.
Yeah. If you look at what we adopted for 2026 and what the estimate is for 2026, it calms your heart a little bit.
And so, then it looks like in the following years, then the thought was, start to really drain down the fund balance.
So, you're staying at that existing. And so, you have.
We won't do that.
2028.
That's because one of my questions before I came to the meeting, like, why would we do that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're exactly right in thinking that because that was my first thought. And then it's explained. And again,
I get it.
2028, you have Facebook. So, you're going to have a boost there.
John, do you have any questions? Nancy, do you have any questions?
No, Nancy.
No, from Nancy.
Tori?
I was curious if you guys have explored yet any partnerships with Crete County Health Department?
Exactly. So, as the end of the year goes, yes, we will probably, if we needed to, we would probably maybe try to juggle. The library has a thing. So, Veggie RX is where a family is established by a doctor to get fresh vegetables. And that was something Shawna incorporated here. It's done at the library. So, the library and the health department, yes, we would. And that would exactly be what my, that would exactly be my goal.
Yeah. A roundtable conversation. That was something that was discussed. You don't want to have lots of crossover. And especially if everybody has the same lot of money, you know, you don't want to be double doing. But if there's, she already has so much collaboration that she works with these partners and has established these relationships.
Yeah. So, her position isn't exactly the same, you know, because she's connected to the College of Health and can tap into all the expertise from the college and the evidence-based protocols. But so there is some benefit to her being located where she is. Yeah. But yes.
And partnership with St. Charles is that? I just went in. It was interesting. I was at the doctor's office and I got this questionnaire. And, you know, about various things. And there was a thing in there about, you know, is anyone in your household or you, you know, food insecure? And I thought, oh, they're pulling information for something in, you know, the greater central Oregon area regarding food insecurity.
And I bet a lot of people check that.
Yeah, they might be a partner too. I don't know. I'm sure she works with them.
Two statistics that I came out with, the 385 million, one in every six Oregonians is suffering from food insecurity.
One in every four children goes out two meals a day.
Yeah. No, it breaks your heart. And like this year, I worked the holiday partnership. And it humbled me and broke my heart. And yeah. It's a very good, it's a very, very good program. And again, I commend Crete County for the generosity of our citizens.
Well, and I think the Meals on Wheels programs.
Yes, yes. And now, I've got to tell you this other thing that happened last year. Come to find out that United Way got a grant. And they had money for Jefferson County and they had money for Deschutes County, but no one had ever said anything about Crete County. And they needed someone to claim it. So, I went, here I am, here I am. We had $71,000. We were able to buy more containers at the senior center for Meals on Wheels. We had, and it went out to, I can't remember. We weren't there. If Shawna was here, she could tell you exactly who it went out to. But we met, we had a committee. And you had to have certain requirements that you had to meet as the organization to be able for the money. But we gave it out in phases. And one of the things that we were able to help was the senior, senior center because they wanted to expand their program but had no money for containers and so that grant money. But that was 71,000 that was going to go away within 60 days if someone didn't raise their hand. And so, let me tell you, I was never on the phone as fast as I was. And that, again, was Shawna finding that money, how she found it. And look at what it did for our county.
John had a question in the chat. And he said, what will it look like if we use the vehicle fund for maintenance? Is it going to suffer? And I said, no. We allocate money in another fund. And it just says fuel under there. But under, when I, it's fuel and oil changes and everything is under that maintenance line. And so, I answered him under that chat for that. So, if you all have that question, that's where we, it's, the vehicle fund is for the capital outlay. That's for. That's for purchasing, that's for vehicles. It's not for maintenance.
Um, and I had a question, is not hiring the office assistant going to be a burden on our current staff?
It is, and that is something that we have talked about, Will and I, and trying to figure out what we will do. And I know that the nitty gritty of um knowing that Shauna is definitely essential for the community. And um we see that here in the office, hands down. And um we have to figure out what we're going to do, because we will need somebody, you know, um next fair, that'll be a next cycle and stuff, and how that will look. And we did have that budgeted to have, you know, s- someone else. And so right off the bat, that was easy, just to like take that money, you know, and not hire that person. But um we are short. So um Will and I have been talking about it. So we're trying to figure out after this, as figured out what um job duties and stuff will.
Okay, that may be as simple as an MOU between the county and OSU. This has already been discussed by us. And Shauna may have to take off the food insecurity hat and come in and help here. But again, she knows the system here and whatever. So that is an MOU that would have to occur between.
If you want a comparison, none of my offices of similar size have this much staff. The main issue is that OSU employees, um because it's a county building and county staff right now, OSU employees can't be asked, I think, to answer the phone and, and watch the front. Um but I think we can do that pretty easily.
We just, yeah, I think that we do.
So like I had said in the very beginning, it didn't make any sense. Now she's in another building, she's over here, how is it? And she's working staff here. So that was just like one of those deals. But didn't I just be configuring down the road at what we, what we do?
And office assistant, was that a, that wasn't a one FTE?
It's a point seven.
Point what?
Point seven.
Okay. What's the money is covered?
Uh thirty-one thousand four hundred eighty-six. And then um the contingency fund.
We're not touching.
Not touching that, okay.
So I have a question. Is the total we're looking at, is it a hundred and seven thousand or is it eighty thousand? Cause the county, if I understood.
Basically, you could say it's eighty thousand, cause you subtracted the twenty-one thousand that's already budgeted. Or you could take the twenty-one thousand that's budgeted and add it and get your hundred and seven. So it's kind of a
Okay, and I, cause I was looking at this spreadsheet, the adopted in the estimate. And I, I didn't know whether the county's part had already been figured in there or not.
That would be a question for, I guess, even if that's basically.
You said it.
Cause if it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand total funding and, you know, a hundred one or seven, whatever that is comes off there.
Yeah.
It's gonna change these all the way across.
Yeah.
A couple more um suggestions for other partnership opportunities. And Shauna may have to like add some different tasks to her job or something to fill the niches of opportunities for funding we have right now. But the school district could be a partnership. And then I don't know, um with the county, the Title III funds that you guys get, um the taxes or federal funds and move taxes. The federal lands.
Those are all dedicated funds for that. Um but the school district budget in the future could look at.
No, definitely, we're gonna try to look for everything. Like I say, that's why I wanted to bring up the library is seeking and the health. We would definitely try to keep that away somewhere. Because it, it is, food insecurity isn't gonna go away. And I, it just breaks my heart to know someone's hungry in this county now.
Yeah, we're lucky that we're in a position here to even have this conversation.
Yeah.
Of my ten offices where we're having these, this is the only one that can do this.
Lauren, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. Um so is this something that just needs to be adjusted on an annual? Until we get our more long-term solution?
So this, well, we should have probably um printed these out for the ones who weren't on. Um this is the budget we did adopt, so you could kind of look at it. So our, our budget year starts July first and ends June thirtieth. So that's why we have a twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. And so we will be looking at next May or April or May, we'll be looking at the twenty-six, the twenty-five, yeah, no, twenty-six, twenty-seven budget year. So um, yeah, so that's, these are the figures that, uh, let's see, the one.
Yeah.
Um, these are the figures that are actuals. This was adopted the previous year, and then this is what we adopted this year, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
So for, for this fiscal, because you've already adopted the budget, you're looking to rearrange things so that we can cover the eighty?
Yes, so this is where, yeah, next year it'll be a whole different conversation, which comes up in April, May.
So you'd be again looking for the hundred and seven and also get a more long-term?
Yeah, we probably will be including that position.
Won't be able to look at it. Like I say, we're looking for just a year right now.
Okay.
Yeah, one year at a time.
So this is where they're saying they're willing to forego this office assistant here.
Right.
And then uh the fifty thousand for this year, which is in and of the most services.
Not touching the contingents.
And not touching.
Okay. And I guess the other question was on these other, these other places that funding streams. Are there any restrictions on how to use that money, like on personnel or services applied?
Brett, that always do that.
Yeah, that would be Nicole.
Um, well, they're allocated to different programs. And the family community health, that's seven percent, the nine point three million is coming out of there. So that's why they're doing a complete reward. Um and there's a little bit of places where 4H is picking up some FTE or Ag is picking up some FTE. But um we're already, this budget is short as well. It didn't get continued service level. Um and the outdoor school was, they're not, outdoor school's not in here. They were cut by twelve million dollars um by the state this year. And so that's overhead that we're not getting as well. So it's, there isn't any pots in here for much to take it. And honestly, Shauna is one of our newer employees. So, yeah.
Hey.
All ahead.
Okay.
Have we had conversations with Shauna about like, just how does she feel about trying to look for funding this next year?
She would, I mean, yes, she's, like I say, she's a go-getter.
Yeah, I know.
She sent her, she sent her an email in like ten minutes, she comes back with this whole document for me, and I'm like, whoa. So, yes, yes. We're all trying to work this together, the county and OSU and all of us to try to, because I just feel the importance of the position is, and the need is there. And the school district would be a good avenue. I don't know if they have extra money, but, you know, because, and that's why we're not calling her SNAP Ed anymore. She's gonna be called Community.
Community Health.
Yes, which enables a broader window there. And maybe we can for uh make something with the, with the school. Maybe that's another avenue for us. I'm not sure. Maybe Park and Rec would try and pick up something about nutrition or something to go with their sports. Maybe that would be an avenue. We just need to keep exploring it. But September, pink slip's coming.
Well, they're getting notified now.
Well, yeah.
Brett, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I think uh the obvious big concern would be, you know, what's it take away from? And that's been adequately answered here. So, and uh really appreciate Susan, you digging into it so deeply. I mean, that's, that's really
And Brian hasn't mentioned, but the first day the news came, I think Brian was the one that said, did you realize that I just got a call from a citizen? And SNAP Ed is, I can't remember how you phrase it. I went, what? And so that was immediately, I had a meeting with Shauna, and then I came and Nicole, Rebecca and I, and then I got finance involved. They've been hearing about this for a while. I've been up.
It's really, really good to know that it's been looked into so, so closely. So that's reassuring. I guess uh moving ahead, you know, for following years, uh twenty-seven will probably have some work cut out for us. But uh that's uh, that's something that will
I think if we're forward-thinking, you know, and I think everybody seems like they are, and they're wanting it to stay and wanting to be proactive. I think it'll, you know, all come together. And with what you were saying about um the uh getting that call and stuff, we got a, a call yesterday from just a citizen that he was um interested on how we would be impacted, cause he knew we had somebody that worked with SNAP Ed. And then I just had answered a couple of questions, um and then sent him to Shauna, and then she called me. He just was a concerned citizen and wanted to make sure that there was still gonna be somebody here to support um food um sufficiency with um not only the kids but the elderly. He even said that he knew that she had helped with like, there's a calendar that she provides. Then I, I didn't know, I don't think he said anything about it, but there's a calendar that has where all of the um
Food resources, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, food resources of any kind.
This year, I placed that calendar in our, where you go into the county assessor and pay your taxes. I placed it there, because we had people that were making payments. So I placed it. I told Christina, I want this to be there. Because then if they are suffering from insecurity, we know they're coming in to pay their taxes, here's these calendars. And that is totally Shauna. In fact, she does them three months at a time. I have them on my bulletin board.
But he just wanted to make sure, he wondered how we would be impacted here. And I said, well, you can talk to her. And I forwarded it to her and just, just concerned. So I was knowing that the public is actually aware, you know.
Oh, and I mean, yeah, I mean elderly particularly, you know, that they've served, they've served our country. They, they, you know, I mean, yes, no one in America, I think, should be hungry. But I'm a cook, I guess.
And if we can extend this a year, that gives us a lot of time to look at other avenues.
Yeah.
Yeah. More partnerships.
Janelle, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I'm just kind of thinking ahead. I, I, you know, I think there'll be additional challenges as we go into the next calendar year. Just kind of given how things are going at the federal level and how that'll affect the state. And I don't think the state has probably fully seen the effects of what's happening. So, yeah. I think it's great, and I don't have any more questions at this point.
I think there will be a role for this board to help guide us in how we look at amplifying some of these pots of money, philanthropy, research. Um we can't, I don't think it's fair to expect a trickle-down of responsibility where the counties are um funding everything because it cuts
Right.
Cuts at other levels. So I look forward to continuing to work with you all to, to get creative and, and look at other opportunities.
I mean, I think they'll probably, I mean, I hate to say it, be some really difficult choices in the future. But I also think informing, and you know, part of being a governmental organization and stuff, you can't really do it. But somehow informing the community, what is happening in their community, cause people do not know. They think everything is fine. It's not fine. It's not. And um, you know, if we can use this as a model or, you know, this is what we had to do, and, you know, but it's a year-to-year thing. And um there's probably some really good learning experiences out of what Shauna has been doing and can do that can be replicated elsewhere. Uh and you know, she's not gonna be here forever, right? It's, you know, one of those things that, um, you know, you hope that you can carry that forward. Sounds great though. Amazing.
What was the title again, that Shauna's title would be changed to?
She'll be Family and Community Health.
Family and Community, okay.
John said, as the staff feels that service will be maintained without the budgeted staff addition and the program that Shauna provides is important to the community. Um I could support a motion to provide temporary funding to buy for some time to find funding.
Okay, so John has made a motion to continue funding. Can you ask him if this is what he's saying? This SNAP Ed position changing to
Hey, let me unmute.
Family and Community Health.
John.
Hi there. Yeah, I don't know, you know, we talked about how much our budget is padded. And maybe we can look at a leaner budget and maybe give her more. But I think that we should consider this as a year-to-year thing.
Okay, so John, um was that your motion uh to continue funding the SNAP Ed position but changing it to Family and Community Health to the end of our fiscal year?
It sure can be.
You might wanna say increase support from twenty percent to one hundred percent.
And a dollar figure. Eighty thousand dollars.
Um, approximately.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, John, come up with it. Okay, so um
I have a clarifying question before that gets moved. If additional funding is found, does that mean that the program won't be expanded, adding program expansion? But will be used to backfill so that, you know, eighty thousand dollars may end up being sixty thousand dollars or fifty thousand?
Yeah, I get the library.
Instead of program expansion, cause if, if, you know, she's expanding the program at a dollar value, you know, that's really getting into this money. Um, which could have effects further down the road ultimately, right? Cause you know, you start chipping away at that. And, you know, we could be in a harder discussion even more so next year. So any additional funds that, I mean, this is up to program. But not, to not expand the program, but to try to keep it whole as is. I don't know.
Yeah, and if alternative funds are found.
I wonder if that makes sense for this year, or like, for example, if the library does get those funds and they can be used for next year?
Maybe look into it, go next year's budget.
If you couldn't put a dollar amount on it and you're just securing the position, there's money that is in there to be able to make sure that she is paid for. We don't have to do a supplemental budget. And it's not changing the line item to make it a personnel piece, anything along those lines. So you don't have to put a dollar amount on that for that case. But I don't wanna be Debbie Downer, forgive me. But uh the other side of it, if you don't have Shauna, are you as a board still um gung ho about this position? Forgive me. I, I don't mean it to be that way. And you have that money that's there, does that position go out to um another OSU person, or then you build relationships again? I, and I don't, I don't, not trying to be that, you're stowing away that money. Or maybe you as a board also look at um the programs that the county pays for right now and what the county supports and what is the need? So um the amount that goes into intergovernmental services right now, is that what you want it to go to? Is that what the need is? So when you look at Better Bones and Balance and Open Campus and Master Gardeners and um being, it was, you know, will be Community Health. So is that where the, you want the money to go?
Well, I think if the position gets vacated for some, whatever reason, uh that that just got, and we're in the financial situation that we are, then the board does have a role, I would think.
Yeah.
Can we, you know, cause it's not about, really about the person, it's about the program. And we just happen to have an outstanding program person. And you know, that's the most wonderful thing in the world. Always. But it also comes with its own stuff too. But yeah, I, yeah. I can see, I know exactly what you're saying. Yeah.
Who'd be stowing away that money, you just start kind of allocating it when it's
I think if, if we're gonna say something happens and Shauna did decide to move on, I think then that would be something to have another
Another conversation.
Uh definitely, because this is about the relationships and, and what she has built in our community.
And dedication.
Yes. And that, and again, if that were to change, which I don't have an indication, and I will in the next year, we'd need to have a discussion, because that would be a whole establishing of basically a lot of content.
So do you have a better written motion than this?
I know, I just was a little bit leery of you putting a dollar amount on something when it's allocated and it doesn't necessarily have to be.
Do you want some help drafting a mo- Do you want some help drafting a motion?
Um, did this sound okay? Uh I thought this is what John was saying.
To fill a gap and fully fill the health position that's being defunded, something to that effect.
Um, to continue funding the SNAP Ed position, changing it to.
You're not changing the title. We're, OSU's changing the title. You're making a motion to fully fund the position that's currently funded at twenty percent.
Okay.
Right?
So is it the SNAP Ed position or is it not? What is it called?
I would just maybe just say the Family Community Health. We were, we at, as advisory council are making a motion to approve um funding for the Family Community Health position from twenty percent to a hundred percent, and just leave it at that. And that takes in that now she's changed, she's not SNAP Ed anymore, that one away. That would be my, is that what you're trying to say?
That sounds good.
You could maybe put parentheses formally SNAP Ed. So then the future, somebody looks at this and says, yeah, what the heck is this? You guys adding a whole new position in addition to.
So you're short of funds.
Yeah.
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 I'd like to add that we would put that through the fiscal year twenty-six.
Hmm.
Yes.
Do you wanna go ahead and make a motion?
So to make a motion that we fund the Community Family and Health position a hundred percent to the um, to the end of the fiscal year twenty-six.
That's a motion I could second.
Oh.
So Tori made the motion, and John seconded.
Is there anything coming in?
Nancy, do you have any questions?
Uh, probably a lot of them. I've got a lot of thoughts going through my head. But um I just wanna make sure that I understand, like, first of all, can we change the name of a position that really isn't a position? I mean, we're, so there has to be the motion to change the name to the Health and Community, Family and Community Health, before we can move that we're, and I get the parentheses part, but it seems like we need to agree to no longer use that name.
The advisory board isn't gonna change the program name. OSU's gonna change the program name.
Okay.
So there, I don't think you need a motion about the name.
Okay, okay, that, that helps. And then the second part, um and maybe this has been answered in all of the discussion, and I just missed it. But when they allocate the funds again, will this committee get to review where they're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul?
By they, do you mean federal allocation?
So, so I thought I heard Suzie say that if the commissioners, if we would approve it, that the commissioners and the financial committees would get together and figure out how that all works.
Um, I'm not exactly sure about that, Nancy, but at, when we come together to make our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, it would be a whole clean slate, and we would talk about what we are going to fund and not fund at that time.
I think what confused you, Nancy, was our conversation earlier. Um this meeting was um for you as the Ag Extension Advisory Board to make a recommendation on whether or not you would like to fund this position, or if you would like additional information or what you, um, so you were fully informed about this position. And then after this meeting, if you would like to make the recommendation to fully fund it, then I would go to the commission and let them know that you are in support of, of fully funding the position. And there is no supplemental budget that is needed or no resolution that is needed. So um no changes at this point in time, because we're not changing anything more than fifteen percent, and we're not having to dip into contingencies uh at all. Um, so uh there, we're using the money that has been dedicated without having to um do those two things, a supplemental budget or a resolution.
And also, Nancy, this has already been gone over by our finance director and also our budget manager, because I needed to know that it was possible, and Rebecca's been in on it, and the county manager's been on it, myself has been on it. We needed to know it worked before we, and Nicole was in on it too, I excuse me, Nicole. We needed to know it worked before we even got to this place. So definitely, we've looked at every penny and, and every budget line item.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor uh made by Tony.
Tori.
Tony, why did I say Tony? Tori, sorry, Tori.
That's okay, and I'm actually wondering if I should add something to it. Do you wanna read what the motion is?
I'll, I'll read what I think it is, okay. Uh, we recommend to the county commissioners to can, to fund the Community Health position one hundred percent for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. That was seconded by John. Is, did you wanna amend your motion?
Do we need to put in there uh anything about the MOU? And having, asking OSU to look into and explore an MOU?
We have no control over that, I do not think.
I don't think, I think we can do that without a motion.
I don't think that's our.
And that's kind of.
Cause we already have an IGA between the county and OSU.
And that's kind of been a part of the discussions all along, so I, I, I trust Nicole and.
Yeah, I think we're okay, but I appreciate your support.
But that is, and that's very.
Asking me.
That is a very good, though, suggestion, Tori, I agree.
Isn't your, isn't your meaning to advise that you're transferring funds and using funds?
You have an IGA. So.
From, from uh with, from, yeah.
So it isn't a budget resolution?
No.
Because it's already been, so I'm not, I, to my, to my understanding from finance, no, we're just approving that we're doing this. But Rebecca, do you wanna fill in on that?
These motions are getting very big and very complicated.
Right.
And, and don't mean anything. The intent of the meeting was what we're needing to make a motion for.
So again, the motion is just, we recommend to the county commission uh to.
You're, you're within your own group, and you're just gonna be funds to be able to continue to SNAP Ed.
To fund the Community Health position one hundred percent for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. That's.
I mean, that's a, what is your, what is your recommendation?
I'm, I'm just sitting here. I'm, I'm not.
Oh, come on.
Wait, cause we, we can't, because you and I are.
Oh, that's true.
So I'm, I'm just trying to simplify this.
And it actually isn't from the county, the money, it just, it's all within the extension fund.
Yes.
Yes, that's, yeah.
And you're just using it as another.
So you're not making recommendations to the county commissioner, you're just approving amongst yourselves to do this.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we were making a recommendation for them to.
Will, that that was the mechanism they wanted, is you guys to approve it, so we knew that you were comfortable. It came to the commissioners and we.
Just as like a FYI, and it's so transparent, like, is that, that okay?
Yes.
You guys, you guys were okay with it, that that's.
Okay, so we don't recommend to the commission to do this, we just.
You have your.
The motion is just to fund the position a hundred percent through the fiscal year, period.
Okay, are you good with that?
Um make a motion that we uh fund the position a hundred percent through the fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay. John, are you good with that?
No, that's what they, yeah, John, he called me today, and that was what he wanted, so.
John, are you good with that?
He keeps muting himself.
He said yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is everybody, no?
I don't know what's wrong with this mute thing.
I have the same problem, John, don't feel bad.
Is there any more discussion on the motion to fund the Community Health position one hundred percent for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year? Seeing no additional discussion? We'll take a vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Laura?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Janelle?
Aye.
Janice, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Tori?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
That's a unanimous vote in favor of the motion. Well, before the public comment, we don't have to ask for other business, okay? Is there any public comments? Do we have to have a vote adjourned, or can we just adjourn?
Make a motion. Make a motion.
I um entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Jerry made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Brett seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Jerry?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
John?
Yes, yes, he says.
Janelle?
Aye.
Janice, aye. Nancy?
Yeah, aye.
Tori?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Unanimous, this meeting is adjourned.
Who's this guy?
Thank you all.
What, are you kidding? Mister Nash.